Welcome to the December 16th regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. Please take a moment to silence your cellphone and then join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thanks. Secretary Hatfield, can you take role, please?
Absolutely. President Roush.
Here.
Vice President McFarland.
Here.
Secretary Hatfield is here. Treasurer Lotterbach.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Ringgold.
Here.
Member Horwitz.
Present.
Thank you. Takes us to our consent agenda. Item number 2.1, our approval of minutes from November 11th special meeting and the November 18th regularly scheduled meeting. Item 2.2, the below being recommended for hire as listed in your agenda packet. 2.3, the below staff announced their resignation effective on the dates as listed in your agenda packet. Item 2.4, approval of payment of the school systems bills for the month of October 2024 as listed in the check registers prepared by Ms. Holderby in the amount of $9,592,918 is recommended. The distribution of obligations by fund is included in the documentation. And finally, item 2.5, approval is requested to authorize legal payments to the below list for professional legal fees through law firm PC for $325 and through law firm PC for $3,045. Can I have a motion for items 2.1 through 2.5?
Support.
Motion by Lotterbach, support by McFarland. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 3.1, Shining Stars. Penny.
Come stand right here by me. Good evening, Board. You know I love shining stars and they're all special, but today is a little extra special because Katie Carlson is here at our admin building and I have the pleasure of seeing her and working with her every single day as a member of our HR team. So I'd like to share a little bit about Katie. She joined the MPS team in 2022 as a Human Resource Administrative Assistant, which is the position she currently holds. She earned both her Bachelor in Business Administration degree and Associates with majors in Human Resources from Baker College. Katie was nominated for a shining star by MPS colleagues, plural, and among their comments were the following: Katie is the definition of an exemplary employee. She has consistently gone above and beyond to ensure that our schools are adequately staffed with qualified substitute teachers. She demonstrates a high level of initiative, problem solving, and a positive attitude in the face of challenges. She's dependable, organized, kind, and is the shining star of the Human Resource Department. And just to put a finer point on that, Katie is the first one in the building every morning. When I get her here, I can see her light on, and she is working hard to make sure that every single one of our classrooms have a caring adult, and some days are a little tougher than others. But she does it with kindness and we really appreciate her tenacity in that. Katie takes pride in her work and is a dedicated MPS employee. She is the primary contact for new staff and is always... Is, yeah, it is. I'm sorry, Katie. You are always an excellent representative of our district. And it's really important when we have new teachers and new team members join that they are so warmly welcomed by Katie. She has remained a constant support in the HR department during times of transition. She is always helpful, friendly, patient with coworkers, new staff, the community, and even me when I walk down there with random questions. She is absolutely a shining star. Congratulations, Katie. Our second shining star is Dawn Brown. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You too. Get to stand right here.
Okay, you're good.
Okay, and a hug. I'll absolutely take a hug. All right, let's read about Dawn. Dawn joined our team in 2006 as a speech-language pathologist. She's worked in several MPS schools, including Eastlon, Plymouth, and Adams, where she currently serves the district. Dawn earned a Bachelor of Science in Communication Disorders and her Master's in Speech-Language Pathology from Central Michigan University. Dawn was nominated for the shining star by several MPS colleagues, and among their comments were the following: Dawn is a great example of a shining star to everyone she encounters. She willingly provides professional development to staff who acknowledge how helpful her training is in their interactions with students. Dawn is instrumental in assisting peer professionals and other staff in providing them the tools that they need to help students be successful, and she works tirelessly to find solutions to the everyday problems students encounter. So very student-centered in your work. Additionally, Dawn is trusted by her students. It's a big statement. They look forward to seeing her and getting her the answers to your weekly jokes. Oh. So this is a thing?
This is a thing, yes.
Every week?
Every week. On Monday, I have a dry erase board outside the speech room, and there's a riddle. I now propose a hint on Wednesday for the kids and then the solution or the answer on Friday. They really look forward to it.
I'm gonna have to stop over and see that.
Yes, yes.
Dawn is intentional in communicating with staff and families. She wants every student to feel successful at school, and not only does she support students on her caseload, but is always ready to help any student who needs it. I've learned so much from working alongside her. She is absolutely a shining star. Congratulations!
Thank you, that was so nice! Oh, I'm so happy for you!
Congratulations, Katie and Dawn. Thank you. Next up is item 3.2, is Spotlight on Excellence, so Jefferson Middle School. Shannon.
Good evening, MPS Board and Superintendents. I'm Shannon Blasey. I am the proud principal of Jefferson Middle School. And tonight, you're going to be hearing from our very own Jefferson Huskies on a special project that they are titling "The World on Your Plate." This is a collaboration between Ms. Jen Layman, our Life 101 and 102 coach, excuse me, teacher, and also Tanya Lambert, our learning coach. So without much further ado, I will turn the microphone over to Ms. Layman and Ms. Lambert.
Good evening, Superintendent Miller Nelson, fellow superintendents, and members of the school board. My name is Jennifer Layman, and I teach Life 101 and 102 at Jefferson Middle School. And Tanya Lambert is the learning coach at Jefferson and collaborated with me to develop "The World on Your Plate" project, sorry. These are my students: Kayden Liaske, Celine Paxton over here, Zoe Kates, Michaela Owens, Trent Seymour right over there, and Josiah Good. They participated in the project and will be helping us present to you their projects and share some of their delicious culinary delights with you. We are excited to present this unique research project where students explore different cultures, how food connects us to culture, traditions, celebrations, and how the region where we live dictates the different flavors and dishes we make. The project provided our students with a rich immersive learning experience. The project was an idea that I had wanted to do for some time. I had all these students in Life 101 last year where they were introduced to basic cooking and baking skills that focus primarily on typical American dishes. In Life 102, I envisioned them learning about international cuisines and in our increasingly connected world, wanted to incorporate some learning about world cultures, values, traditions, and how food and culture are linked. The project is tied directly to our curriculum goals of promoting critical thinking, collaboration, and cultural literacy.
My role was really to coach Jen through her own thinking to develop the project she envisioned. She had all of the principal parts in her head, but wasn't sure how to organize them or where to begin. By asking a lot of questions, I helped Jen clarify her vision and find the process of the project. Together, we took those ideas and created a unit plan along with a series of lessons that walked students through research, a culinary experience, and both a digital and verbal presentation. I was able to develop and gather lesson materials, help create a rubric, and work closely with Jen and her students throughout the process. We taught most of the lessons together, and our coaching conversations helped us to see where we might revise and adjust along the way.
So I would like to talk about the project's structure. So, oh, did I turn it off? There we go. All right. So the students had to research and explore. So in groups, students selected a country or culture to research. They dug deep into the cuisine, traditions and celebration, celebrations unique to the culture. Digital presentations, groups presented slide presentations to the class about what they learned. Hands-on cooking, of course, groups chose a traditional dish from the culture to prepare. They were responsible for ingredient lists, interpreting the recipe and preparing the dish. And then we had an international taste tour. The project culminated in a multicultural food fair where students presented their findings and dishes to invited guests. All right. So now, our student, my students are gonna come up and present a little bit.
My name's Trent Seymour.
My name's Kayden Liaske.
My name's Josiah Good.
My name's Michaela Owens.
My name's Celine Paxton.
My name is Zoe Kates.
We were put in... We were placed into groups, into groups. We were placed into groups. We chose a countr... We chose a country or a culture to research and worked on it on a digital presentation. East Persian in the group was responsible for at least two slides in the presentation.
Here are just a few of the cultures the groups could choose from. Brazil, China, Japan, Mexico, Greece, Lebanon, France, France, and the list goes on.
We were responsible for many aspects of the culture, such as location, the cultural values, their cultural identity, their social customs, their celebrations and traditions, their art, their music, and foods and spices that were found throughout the culture. We do have some of these that we made to pass out at the end of the presentation.
So this project went beyond cooking. It nurtured cross-cultural awareness. Students gained respect for different ways of life. Cross-curricular learning, it integrated history, geography, social studies, research skills, and even math through measurements and conversions. Communication and teamwork skills. Students needed to speak to the invited adults to share what they learned about cooking and their culture. They also worked as a group to pull it all together. The students just blew us away with what they produced. Their dishes were complex, and the presentations exhibited a good understanding of world cultures. Feedback from the students has been overwhelmingly positive. They've even made suggestions for next semester. I mean, we had ramen, we had cream puffs, we had difficult cakes that they had made. It was just, it was really fantastic what they had produced. So thank you so much for your time, and if you have any further questions, we'd be happy to share more. Thank you. The best part. And they made these today.
Oh, wow. Well, thank you. Especially since I haven't eaten dinner yet.
These are French cream puffs.
Dinner of champions. It's just a one-bite brownie.
Well, maybe this is their strategy.
Yeah.
Yes. No question. That's what I do during open house, give them food and...
Ooh, those are really good.
What an unexpected surprise.
Yes. So what have you... Anything that you've cooked at home that you've learned at school? Or what's your favorite thing that you've learned at school to make?
And anybody can jump in.
I don't know, I just use the skills that I've learned in the class to just like work on.
What are you making at home, Kayden?
I've made like breaded chicken and fish and stuff like that.
Dad, is that true? All right.
What about the pulled pork and stuff?
Nice.
Yeah, Trent. What about the mac and cheese? They're done, I guess.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Well, next up is...
I don't have food to pass out. I, you know, that's kinda mean to put me before them, but...
Yeah.
I do have a spreadsheet to share with you. And I have a special guest. Lily Dice is here. She's a senior from Dow High School. She'll speak in the middle of my presentation about her experience. So I'm here representing the Early Middle Colleges. Okay, okay. Thank you for letting me know. So wanted to kinda go over, just a quick overview for the board and for the public, what our Early Middle College program is. It's, we call it an EMC. It's a five-year program. And so that goes through a plus-one year or a 13th year of high school, where students, it is totally approved by the Michigan Department of Education. It, part of its requirement is that we have a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, with each partner that we have, and we have three partners now: Davenport University, Delta College, and Northwood University. And I'll go into what their specific aspects are in a little bit. But the goals are one of the most important parts of this. It's to earn one of these five or more of these five options. So a full Associate's degree, depending on the school, it's 60 or 62 credits, or at least 60 transferable credits to complete a professional certification that's recognized in the industry, to participate in a registered apprenticeship program. And in all my years running Early Middle College, I've never had a student do that one because the state wants to do more of those, but it's a challenging part. Or to qualify for the Michigan Early Middle College Association, so that's MEMCA. So I'll refer to MEMCA quite a bit tonight, their certificate. What that means is that you earn at least 15 credits, college credits, plus you have your college readiness curriculum approved by the MEMCA board, and students have to earn either a combination of 70 hours of college and career study with service learning opportunities, or 100 hours of either one of those by themselves. We do not currently have the MEMCA certificate yet. It's a process that we're going through at this time. So the students who should participate in the program, MEMCA or the state of Michigan really focuses on first-generation college students. That's how the Early Middle College movement started in the United States, was to help first-gen students get into college and have more wraparound supports to be successful in college. What I, what we have found is that students need to have good time management because they're on their own. They are living in two worlds, as a high school student and as a college student, and their rights are different between those two. Even being a high school student, what parents can do for them is different when they are a college student. And so they need to have the time management. They have to speak for themselves, so strong self-advocacy. They have to have a strong work ethic. College transcripts are with you for life. Once you leave high school, you have to have your diploma, but few jobs after college ask you for your high school transcripts. Every job asks for the college transcripts, and every class stays on there forever. And maturity, because you're in college classes, there are gonna be mature topics that may not exist in the high school class. But why should students participate? And this is where Lily's gonna talk to us in a second. It helps with a smoother transition to college because they are having support while they're in high school to make that transition. Instead of being a high school graduate going off in the fall and parents drop them off and say, "Good luck," they have somebody that they can always lean back on. They still have their high school counselors, they have myself, they have other people that they can get support from. It saves family money. That is a big draw for families, obviously. College is not getting any cheaper these days. It accelerates their timeline for earning their college degrees because now they have earned, they can earn that Associate's after one more year of high school, whereas everybody else would have just started in that year. And then to challenge themselves. So I'm gonna turn some time over to Lily to address why she joined the early college, and she has something really cool that she's gonna share with, like, where she's headed with this.
Hi, Board. My name is Lily Dice. I am a senior at Dow High School this year as well as a second-year Early Middle College student, and I would love to tell you how much this program has truly changed my life. Not only has it saved me entirely a lot of money, but it has taught me so many different things. When I first started into high school, my parents got an email from the superintendent outlining kind of what this program was. They told me about it, and we learned a little bit more about it together, but I didn't know fully if I really wanted to go into it. I knew it would give me a lot of extra stuff that might look good on a transcript one day, but I was pretty dead-set on wanting to go the traditional way, get a four-year degree, live in the dorms, and everything else that comes with it. A little bit later in that year, I did some more reading about it, and I really thought how much this could truly benefit me. I still really wasn't sure if I wanted to do this, but then, a few months later, I was sitting in this exact same room, learning more about what it was, because here we are today. Eventually, we got the sign-up for it, and I was still pretty hesitant about it. But on the last day that sign-up was open, I decided to jump the gun and go for it. So I put my name down on the list, and I got pulled from class to learn a little bit more about it, about what it was, from one of the admin that ran it at the time. During that, I really decided that this is what I wanna do. It can't hurt me, and honestly, it could give me the push I needed to succeed more than what high school could just give me and then going on to college. So I sat down with those same people, I did my interview, and then I told myself over the summer, if I really didn't want to do this program, then that's the time to drop out. So I ended up not dropping out of the program, but when I went and sat in that first college class that I attended at 16-years-old, surrounded by so many peers that were so much, so many years older than me, but we were still on the same level, it kind of clicked. I was able to, through all of my dedication to my academics that my parents have always told me will pay off one day, I, it finally happened. I was sitting in a classroom surrounded by everybody who has already completed high school, and I'm sitting here as a junior. Two years later, I'm here talking to all of you about how much this program has truly changed my life. Initially, I've decided that I always wanted to go into something in the medical field, so obviously, an Associate's of Applied Science was the route I was gonna go. When I didn't really know anything about what I wanted to do in the medical field, I started talking to my friends and doing some research, and I learned about what diagnostic medical sonography was. I did a lot of research about it, and I truly became obsessed with it because what is better than taking pictures of little people inside of other people all day and all of the sort of stuff in between? Ultimately, I decided that that's the route I wanted to go. And so I thought, okay, cool, they can pay for the, all the classes in between, the prerequisites, and then I'll pay for clinicals on my own. So it was actually last week that I sat down and was talking to Mr. Pelles about my tuition initially, and then he came up with this lovely spreadsheet that you guys have in front of you. And we looked through all the classes I have taken before, my high school classes, and what has counted, and everything in between, and so most of it was filled, but we saw we had a few elective classes left to go. So we decided, well, what can we put in those elective classes? So we started talking it over, and I learned that after walking the stage in May from Dow, I won't receive my diploma because they will, middle and public schools will hold it so they can pay the rest of my tuition for that extra 13th year. But the next winter semester at Delta, I would walk the stage with my Associate's of Applied Science degree, less than a year after I walked the stage from my high school. Along with that, we go back to those empty elective credits, and we think, well, what can we do? So I only had about four left to go. So Mr. Pelles made a call to Delta, and he was wondering, well, what can I do to fill those? So we found that if I take two classes for phlebotomy and two classes for the CNA, I will be able to achieve both of those certificates at the same time as I get my Associate's of Applied Science degree. So not only will I walk with my Associate's of Applied Science degree, I will walk with that phlebotomy certificate and that CNA certificate, which will ultimately allow me to get a job straight then and literally whenever I would want. And then the waitlist for ultrasound is pretty long right now, so I'll be able to save and save, and then I will be able to pay my way through my ultrasound clinicals, which is something I really wanted to do, and I really did not want to take out loans. So on top of those three things, after I'm done with clinicals, I will walk again with an Associate's of Applied Science and Diagnostic Medical Sonography. So if anybody here is thinking of doing this program, I could not recommend it more. It has truly changed how I looked at my life, and I want to thank each and every person here that has made that possible. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lilly. Now, I do want to caution that that's not always the case, right? She had taken the right classes without real any guidance of her own previously and it just fit in perfectly. That spreadsheet that you have before you is something that I've been working on with the counselors and the registrars at both buildings. Because it becomes our digital EDP. So on the one side, you can see all the high school classes that are required for graduation. On the other side, that is the copy of the Delta one. And so the top part of the Delta is the Michigan Transfer Agreement. So at least 30 credits that could then guarantee a transfer within the state. The middle part is extra requirements for Delta for the associate's degree. And the bottom are different electives. So we're working on every student that's in the EMC having one of these. Actually, every student is our goal to have this digitally because then it's very easy to see where students are at district-wide. Working first on the EMC students. And Lilly's just worked out perfectly. It was like a match made in heaven. It was beautiful to be able to do all those, those different programs. This is a little bit of the, kind of our data of where students are at. You can see, the cohort one is our first year of doing it, back in 22, 23. Cohort two is the cohort that Lilly is in. And cohort three is our brand-new students that are juniors or some sophomores this year. We have about 94 students. Actually, it's 93. Today, one of my students has had some medical challenges and is pulling out of the early middle college so that she can finish her high school diploma while she goes through some medical situations. So that's the breakdown. At Davenport, it's really easy. That sheet is really easy. It's, it's one set of classes for the cyber defense associates. At Northwood, same thing. It's just one set. They don't have a lot of options. There are some electives that they'll choose. That is for the business management associates. And then at Delta, right now, we're focused on the associates of arts, associates of science. But that's the breakdown of the students, where they're at from each school and in their cohort. So benefits to our community. The state and the government is always looking at, how are we retaining students, no, students, graduates to work in our communities where they grew up? This program increases that likelihood that they are going to graduate from college. And we know from the data that graduating from college is greater likelihood of having a well-paying job and a job where you can then give back to the community. It also connects students with our local colleges and universities. We have some fantastic programs. At Northwood, their e-learning team is a world champion. That's right in our back door, right? We have, we can put students here rather than sending them off afar. I know every kid wants to think they want to go out west or go out east. There, we have great programs here that we can connect them to right now. And then to offer our students more diverse program options. Lilly spoke very well about what it meant for her. That's why we do the EMC program, is to give new opportunities and more opportunities for our students. Some notable enhancements that we've done this year is that EDP sheet that you have before you. It is shared with all of the admin and counselors at each building so anybody can find that student's pathway. We're clarifying key requirements. How many credits equals this? And, and making sure that's all codified and written down for everybody that needs to have that information. I'm connecting these students more with their high school counseling department. This isn't EMC students alone. They are still Dow High students, still Midland High students who want them to still feel very much a part of their home school and not just feel isolated because they are going to college classes. We've also initiated an early warning system with Delta. This is where they will send me a message if a student is missing days. What, it's still in its infancy. It is a voluntary program at Delta. But more and more staff are using it. And so as soon as I get a message, if a student's missed two days, I send a message to the student and the counselor saying, "How can we help? What, what's going on that we can support you?" To try and catch these situations early on in the program. But what's next? So we, I need a secure MEMCA certification. All of our graduates this year that are their plus-ones will have earned 60 credits or more. So I don't need that MEMCA certification as one of the options. But that really means I have to be, develop an intentional college readiness curriculum. What MEMCA really wants is a full wraparound service at the school to support students in this. And that's what they want to see when we go before them to get this approved. We want to examine career and technical education with, with early middle college. There is information out there. I had a meeting with Delta two weeks ago where we discussed at length this. We need to bring Andrea Jozwick as our new CTU coordinator into that discussion to examine that. What we're looking at starting with would be like welding tech with auto tech, our programs that we already have that are within that realm. We need to increase some of our supplemental supports. One thing I'll be looking at is a meal program for our students at college. When I ran the Great Lakes Bay Area League College, I started a meal program there where students at SVSU could eat for the free and reduced lunch prices. And if they were free, they ate free at the cafeteria there. Mentoring and coaching, so more opportunities for our students. And then connecting students more directly with the campus resources. There's a wealth of information there. Students just need to read their emails more and, and, and know what is available to them. And so that's one of our goals, is to get them into those resources to support them. And then I also want to add some additional pathways as we move forward. As we grow our capacity, we can add additional associate's programs. Every time I do that, I just have to get authorized by the state. That's with that five-year program of study. But it's relatively simple after that. What questions do you have?
Lucas and Lilly, that was a great presentation. And I'm so excited to hear about your success and where you're going out of this program. One thing, Lucas, for the student athletes who are looking at this and are concerned that maybe their NCAA eligibility starts when they enter college, does this program have any effect on their four-year eligibility?
Not on their four-year eligibility. So the way that it works, I've gotten more information since we're at Northwood, is you have your four years of high school to play in, in high school. If you are at a junior college, you can petition to play at the junior college level in your fifth year. If it is a university, Division II or Division I, then you will not be able, you can, you can, there's some participation guidelines, but you cannot be an official part of the team. Or else that starts your eligibility. And so we've had some students, we have, actually have some of our students who will be leaving as seniors because they're getting some, some athletic scholarships. So they don't want to forego that. So they'll be leaving at the end of this year. The MEMCA Association, the state of Michigan, has made it easier for a student to withdraw from the early college. It used to be really challenging. They made it easier for this type of situation. Or for a student that just decides, this isn't the path that I want to go. We don't want to lock them in and make them feel like they have to suffer through just because they made a choice as a junior or sophomore.
Okay. I just will throw a general comment out there. My son, Sebastian, is one of the six at Northwood. And he loves this program. And I will say, as a parent, you guys are phenomenal. The communication is seamless. You have been responsive. The people at Northwood are responsive to questions. They get back within a day. It is, I feel very informed about what he's doing. And I can stay hands-off to really let him get that college experience. And, and he is really thriving. I mean, he has really grown a lot since starting this at the beginning of the semester. And I can't tell enough people to get involved in this program. I'm shocked that there were only six with Northwood. And I really want to see that number grow. So if there's a way that we can help you facilitate that and get what you need to, to continue the success with this program, I want to help you do that.
Thank you. One thing, we are having our parent informational night on Wednesday at 6:30 at Central Auditorium. We're combining Dow High and Midland High. Bringing all the partners there to talk about it. So get the word out for that. We've been sending out messages. And I'll send out another email to all the 10th graders tomorrow and their families.
So Lilly, congratulations on what you've accomplished so far. It's amazing. So keep up the great work and, and looking forward to your continued success. Lucas, thanks for the, the update. I'm excited to hear about the skilled trades work that, that you and Andrea are starting to, to work on. And, and to the extent that we can find a pathway for our students to achieve their certificates and apprenticeships so that they can enter the workforce right away when they're 19-years-old is an amazing opportunity for them. I guess my, one question would be, as you look at different career pathways and vocations, how do you decide which opportunities to pursue? Whether early middle college is business administration, cybersecurity, I think, health and what Lilly's pursuing with ultrasound. How do you, for our early middle college program, decide what's, what's best? Is it really supply and demand of what our students are asking for? Or is it a combination of what's offered by our local partners? Kind of, how does that process work?
So currently, it's what I had available as I started this, or came into the school district this summer. It will be primarily student interest. As students are driving for this, then there's reason to go after creating a new pathway. Creating something and hoping that they're going to come. I've done that several times in the last 20 years in education. Doesn't always work out well. And so I want to be going from where the students are. We're looking at using Zello even more as part of our career, college and career readiness curriculum, school-wide, through some of the initiatives that they're doing. I can glean that data to say, okay, there's a lot of students that are interested in this. What can we do with one of our local partners? It's interesting because every time I meet with a student, I say, "What is your goal? What do you want to do?" And that's what helped me guide Lilly. And they don't always know, and that's totally okay. We all change our mind. But if they're interested in this route, then I'm going to push them towards that. If they're interested in business at all, I'm going to push them towards Northwood. If they're interested in, in working in the cyber industry, I'm going to push them towards Davenport because those are great segues into anything else. If they're undecided, I push them to Delta. Because, and then it's a question of, are you ever thinking of becoming a medical doctor or being a scientist or doing this? And I just ask them key questions and then put them either in the associate of science and the associate, or the associate of arts. Incidentally, the only difference is that associate of science needs 21 of their credits of the total 62 that are from math or science. And so it's not outside the realm of possibility for a student to change and add those extra credits to get to that. And on their, on the spreadsheet, when it all calculates out for them, they'll see, because they put it in certain spots, that if they can earn the associate of science or the associate of arts.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Next on our agenda is item 3.4. This is for action. MPS application for preliminary qualification for bonds. Penny.
Good evening. I think we're having, continuing to have some audio issues. It seems to maybe just take a little dip every five minutes or so. So we'll, we'll bear with this and do the best we can. So I do have for the board's action tonight, approval of the Midland Public Schools' application for preliminary qualifications for bonds. I just want to give us a quick recap of where we've been. You all have engaged in considerable dialogue and analysis regarding this bond program. And that included input from the community, the facility assessment, and lots of other information there in between. The board reached consensus at a recent meeting on those key components of the bond program and the fact that we will seek the May 2025 election. All of that is reflected in the bond application. It includes $285 million in projects that address our areas of need, the primary focus. Primary areas of focus are enhancing safety and security, expanding pre-K program opportunities, improving educational program spaces at all of our school sites, addressing aging facilities and infrastructure needs, upgrading arts, athletics, and elementary play spaces as, as highlights. Two key projects in this bond program are the construction of a new elementary school and the construction of a new middle school to replace Northeast. It also includes school projects to be completed, such as, again, safety and security upgrades, classroom improvements, CTE renovations, improvements in arts, athletic playgrounds at our elementaries, mechanical and electrical upgrades, bus replacement, technology equipment and furniture replacement, just to list the few, a few of the components in this bond program. It's really important to note a couple of things as reminders to you all as board members and to just go on the record. The bond application is a guide for these projects. It's our best planning at this moment in time. But inherent to this process is flexibility from what you see in that bond application. And that flexibility is because of the nature, the scale and the scope and the length of this overall bond program. And I just make that disclaimer because we obviously will share all of this information very publicly. And we want folks to, to remember that over the course of these years coming, things change. We, however, must remain true to the ballot language. There is no flexibility in that. What is on the ballot and the voters approve is binding. I think I'll leave it there. I just want to note next steps pending your approval of this bond application. President, excuse me, Secretary Hatfield will sign that bond application tonight upon approval. Tomorrow, we will send that off to the Department of Treasury. They get to work on that straightaway. And then the week before our January board meeting, that Thursday or Friday, I think it is, is the deadline for them to return that to us with approval. And at that January board meeting, should you choose to call for election, that will be a formal resolution from, from the board. That is what I have for you this evening. President Roush, what might you add to that before you take action?
Thanks, Penny. I think, you know, we've, we've been at this almost two full years. And it's through a lot of hard work and really good community input that we've reached consensus on what's really an exciting opportunity for our district. In particular, our little students, our youngest learners. And, you know, through, through our district data, using our, our student proficiency and growth data as our North Star, we are addressing the critical needs of our district by really trying to attack outcomes for our third-grade reading scores and, and address needs at our elementary school first and foremost. And this bond application does that by first, first making sure that we address space constraints, which alleviates the bursting at the seams of our northern elementary schools, but also allows us to add more pre-K programming in our elementary schools. Those two things will allow us to make sure that we have more and more students in high-quality preschool programs in our district and affect the outcomes of third-grade reading. That is what we do as a district. Period. We educate students and we are judged on how well we educate students. And that's first and foremost what we have to change and how we measure ourselves from a success standpoint. Beyond that, we are also addressing a need that we talked to our community about 10 years ago. And that is Northeast. 10 years ago, we told our community that it was at the end of useful life and we would be back to them in 2025 to replace the building. And that's what this, that's the, the other thing that this bond addresses. As, as we move forward, as Penny talked about, one of the things in the bond that I want to make sure that we are 100% transparent about, Anna and Brian have done a lot of work on this, is making sure that we're really clear with how the $285 million is raised. Anna, I might look to you to help me explain this and make sure that our community fully understands how the 3.25 mil- understands how the 3.25 mil increase over what is currently being paid, the 3.25 up to 6.2, right? The 3.25 increase for a total of 6.2 is, is impacted and how it's collected, so.
Sure. I'll be glad to talk on that a little bit. As you mentioned within there, looking at that 2.95 that we already have, adding in the 3.25 to get your 6.2. You'll see in some of the bond language that that number looks a little bit different than 3.25. But as our 2015 bonds continue on, the repayment schedule changes slightly, and they're kind of like with your mortgage, you're paying more interest upfront. As you go through, that interest decreases. So within your makeup of that 6.2 that we would have, the shifting within there of how those funds are going towards the 2015 bond and the proposed 2025 bond would stay at that 6.2, but make sure that we're balanced within there to meet all of our obligations.
Thank you. And we will, we'll post this on our website, but we, we took Joe's picture graph and, and put it in Excel to make sure that we were explicit with exactly how this is working with the, the increase. But we will post the, the work that Anna and PFM have done together. With that, I'll entertain a motion for item 3.4 for action.
I move that the board approve the application for preliminary qualification of bonds as presented by the administration for filing with the Michigan Department of Treasury and that the secretary of the board be authorized to sign same.
Support. Motion by Lotterbach, support by Hatfield. John, can you take roll call vote, please?
President Roush?
Support.
Vice President McFarland?
Yes.
Secretary Hatfield?
Yes.
Treasurer Lotterbach?
Yes.
Member Blazy?
Yes.
Member Ringgold?
Yes.
Member Horowitz?
Support.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Phil, if I could just jump in as a follow-up, I shared next steps. And to your point, we will have lots of information available on what used to be called the facility planning webpage that will be repurposed to a bond program informational page. Our communications team will be working on that and ensuring that there is an updated FAQ, that these documents that were referenced tonight are available. And in addition to that, there'll be plenty of opportunity for community information sessions as we engage with our community throughout this informational campaign. So stay tuned for more, and we can recap that in January after you all call for election.
Thanks, Penny. Okay, with that, we will move to item four, which is request to address the board. First on the list is Joe Bonides. Welcome, Joe.
Greetings. Wow, you actually said 6.2. I'm impressed. Today, I'd like to yet again talk about transparency. In most communications, the new bond now looking at 3.25 is called an increase, and the only place you had previously said any of that was in the FAQs of November 11th, but not in forward-together newsletters or press releases. Well, I, like most residents in the county, had the joy of receiving my winter tax bill recently, and I had a chance to review all the educational charges on my tax bill. I, like most citizens, did not read the details of my tax bill in the past. So instead of my previous description of hiding the fact that it was 2.95 plus 3.25, let's look at some real numbers. As you can see, MPS really has 3.65 mils against my property already. That's the 2015 bond plus tech plus SROs, which would then go up to 6.9 mils after this bond for something like 10 years. And the non-homestead properties actually go up to 24.5 mils, so the renters will get hit as well. If I add all the ESA charges of 2.16, the Delta College charges of 2.24, and the overbearing state charge of 6 mils, I am currently at about 14 mils and on my way to 17.3 with this new bond. I'll send you the spreadsheet, get it in the mail, don't bother writing it. Wow, I was amazed at that total. It surprised me. You can show the audience and then, thank you. Going further down transparency road, it has been really quiet regarding no pool. After the encouraging demonstration by the swimmers last month, crickets. Listening to the last meeting again at 1.5 speed, I found President Roush's comments around, quote, "You would let us pool trump the needs of our youngest learners," unquote, rather insulting to the audience that is watching the resources they count on continue on a planned decline with no communication on upcoming resolution. They were not looking for perfect. They were going, they were going to vote against it getting worse. I would have thought that the outcry at the last board meeting, based on that, the FAQs would have been updated to provide some acknowledgement of the pool taking an alternate route than MPS ownership. Alas, no. Does anyone sitting up there have a concept of damage control? So with your timeline of May 2025 for a bond vote, you may want to have at least a plan forward on a pool by April, or you will be enhancing the no vote even further. As for me, I was amazed at the tax bite of education on my property, and I'm concerned that the board is on its way to being addicted to overlapping bond proposals to address our aging fleet of buildings. From my perspective, you are writing a mortgage on my property. Thank you.
So Joe, you want us to make the mileage bigger to pay for a pool? Is that your suggestion?
Some version.
I don't get it, man. All right. Bill Domina.
Good evening. At the previous board meeting, I requested more details on the reasons why the existing schools such as Northeast cannot be updated instead of being demolished and replaced by a new school. I realized that I needed to provide more detail on what I, and perhaps many taxpayers want to know, so the following type of analysis would be helpful. If we take aesthetics and upgrading the school building to the latest trends in school design out of the analysis, please consider listing the perceived deficit, such as needing a new roof, against a realistic estimate on the cost to correct that specific deficit. I also, I also believe that this analysis should not be done by MPS maintenance personnel, but by an external entity, such that you would assure impartiality and also have expertise in the specific deficit, which, you know, maintenance people don't always have the expertise. And Brad, you can address that electrically as well. Off the top of my head, I can see having areas that are perceived deficits, such as the roof, HVAC, lighting, windows and doors, asbestos removal, parking lots, interior painting, and restoring the pool, et cetera. Those kind of things could be listed in a spreadsheet, and then the people who are going to be looked at to pay this would say, oh, there's some data. It's actually much more expensive to do the retrofits than it is for the new building. That would work in your favor, but I want to see the data. Okay? So for each school deemed at end of life, the deficits along with the proposed corrective action and light on the cost could be totaled, aggregated, and compared against the cost of the, of the proposed new schools. I believe that that information is presented, when that is presented to the taxpayers, we could make a reasoned evaluation whether or not to support the bond, and it certainly would have the best chance of changing my leanings at this moment. I think this would be very good for you because let's just, right now, we know that the path is set. Okay, we've just voted on that. And I think it'd be very good for you to have this kind of analysis to show people like me who are doubtful that it is a, a fiscally responsible method, as opposed to saying, we need to replace them at end of life. Because I don't know how much you can, it would cost to retrofit a building, but if it's 60 million per building, well, okay, good. I have that, and maybe I'll support it. So I ask you to do that if you would. On a totally separate topic, I noticed we're going to go into closed session on the legal matters. I guess I'd be real curious, what, what are we, what kind of legal cases are we pending? It doesn't have to be detailed, but we're paying three grand for these different law firms. Actually, what do we, what kind of lawsuits, is that a public thing that we can see? Like, are you fighting against Freedom of Information Act? Are you someone's for sexual harassment? What is the case? I'd like to know as a taxpayer, the issues. So thank you.
That was everybody I had on my list. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Item five is Curriculum Instruction and Assessment 5.1, CIA Study Committee Minutes from November 18th.
CIA Study Committee.
Let's give that a try.
Meeting date, November 18th, 2024. Members present were myself as chair, Ann Horowitz, Jen Ringgold, Ken Weaver, Penny Miller Nelson, and Brian Bruton. Guests present, Catherine Sterns, Andrea Joswiak, Joy Yang-Jao, Kim Funnel, and Voloshny Marugan. Midland High Media Center conference room is where we met, and the meeting started at 1:30 PM, and our very first topic was Teachers of Tomorrow. Mrs. Andrea Joswiak and Mrs. Catherine Sterns updated the Board Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Subcommittee on the Teachers of Tomorrow programs held at Dow High School and Midland High School. In addition to their presentation, a panel of six students who are enrolled in the Teachers of Tomorrow programs answered questions about their experiences and perspectives related to the program. We also had an HIV slash AIDS and sex education update. Mrs. Andrea Joswiak presented an overview of the sex education biennial report and review process to the Board Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Subcommittee. The overview included a discussion of the current status of the Midland Public Schools' curriculum, members of the sex education advisory board, and progress toward the board, the program's goals and objectives through collected data. We also received a diversity, equity, and inclusion update. Joy updated the Board Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion initiatives within Midland Public Schools and the community. We also then went in to hear about two major change proposals. Two major change proposals were presented to the Board Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Subcommittee. Mrs. Voloshny Marugan presented a major change proposal to embed the personal finance standards in the required economics course at the high schools to satisfy the graduation requirement for the class of 2028. Mrs. Kim Funnel presented a major change proposal to add an elective course at all secondary schools for multilingual language learners to support the development of their English language proficiency. Availability of the course will depend on a number of students who qualify for the course based on WIDA scores at each school, which stands for?
Oh, somebody help me out here. This is one of those things that I'm not sure we ever really remember what it's called. It, it is.
Yeah.
It is a, a test that all schools in Michigan are required to use to assess the level of, of language proficiency for students who are English learners.
Good answer.
I'm so sorry. We'll get, we'll get back to you on WIDA.
Summer school. Dr. Ken Weaver presented an overview of summer school programming, programming that was offered at all Midland Public Schools during the past summer to the Board Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Subcommittee. The meeting adjourned at 3 o'clock, and we will not meet again until 2025.
Thanks, Brad. Item 5.2 for information, major change proposals. Ken?
Yeah, we have the two major change proposals that were just talked about in the, the notes, the first one being the English Language Development Course. This is a course that, you know, a student can take according to their WIDA scores. They would enter the course, they could take it multiple times. It would help in their language development. It would be at all four, possibly at all four secondary schools, middle school and high school. And looking to put that in place and really would help strongly develop the language skills as they got into the academics and supported with that vocabulary. As well as the other major change proposal that we have is embedding about, oh, gosh, two or three years ago, I think it is now, the state passed the personal finance requirement, and they gave you several ways in which you could address that. The way that we have chosen to do that is to embed them in the economics course. There is considerable overlap between the two courses. Five of the six strands are embedded in the economics strands already, and so we just have to add a few parts. Strand, one strand on taxes and the other one on FAFSA into the economics course and looking at that. And it would take the course from a 0.5 semester course to a 1.0 semester course. Thus, we would be looking at increasing the graduation credits to 22 and 1/2, and kind of like levels everything back out at that point, because they get a bonus half credit in a sense.
Thanks, Ken. Item 5.3 for information, 2425 Advisory Board on Instruction in Sex Education and Birth Control. Ken?
Yeah, this is the Sex Education Advisory Board. This is just bringing to you the members. We also presented this at CIA meeting last month as well, too. They'll be meeting on January 15th, and they'll be reviewing. We are not anticipating any changes. They'll just be reviewing the curriculum status, looking at the report as well, and finishing up that process.
Thank you. I'll just note, too, that, as noted in the agenda packet, that there's a wide variety of community members represented on that committee, both students, parents, clergy members, staff, consistent with what our legal requirements are.
Yes, thank you.
Item six, Finance, Facilities, and Operations. Item 6.1 are FFO Study Committee Minutes from December 2nd.
Thanks, Phil. Committee met on December 2nd. Members present were John Lotterbach, Brad Blazy, Scott McFarland, Penny Miller Nelson, Brian Bruton, and Anna Wamack. There were no guests present. Meeting started at 5:00 PM. We discussed the October financials, and variances from year to year were discussed. Committee next discussed the decision of the board to move towards a formal vote at the December board meeting regarding the facilities study discussion. Meeting adjourned at 6:05 PM, and we will not meet until our schedule is set for 2025.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Item 6.2 for action, gifts totaling $30,957. Anna?
Yes, tonight, we have three items totaling $30,957, requiring your acceptance on behalf of the board this evening. These items are support for the swim scoreboard at the community pool located at Dow High, the amount of $12,540 from the HH Dow High Sports Boosters, a donation for Jefferson, Northeast, and Midland High of items for students, including yearbooks, hygiene products, dial ride tickets, and miscellaneous basic needs, valued at $9,417 from the Midland Area Community Foundation, and support for the Dow High Varsity Hockey Club in the amount of $9,000 from the parents of the 2024-25 hockey players. We would request that you approve accepting these gifts this evening.
Thanks, Anna. Take a motion to approve item 6.2?
I'll move to approve item 6.2, acceptance of gifts totaling $30,957 as listed in the agenda.
Motion by McFarland, support by Horowitz. Any further discussion?
So the swim scoreboard, what's, we did a new board, and then what's, is this for future upgrades?
This is to help offset the cost of that scoreboard.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6.3 for information, gifts totaling $18,758.46.
The total amount of gifts listed for information only tonight is $18,758.46. These gifts this evening represent support for programs ranging from robotics teams at all levels across the district, to district-wide kindness week activities, to mini grants for college access at both high schools. As is tradition, all donors are going to be recognized in the credits of this evening's broadcast and also through board course. broadcast and also through board correspondents upon your behalf. We are grateful for our community's support of our students and our programs.
Thank you, Anna, and thank you to all of our community members for your donations. Item 7.1, letters from the Board of Education to the following individuals or organizations as listed in your agenda packet. Item 8.1 are scheduled activities. As listed in your agenda packet, I'll note that we did update the meeting dates for January and February to not conflict with the two holidays where the school is out of session and move those to the Tuesdays, January 21st and February 18th. Item number nine is study session discussion. Item 9.1, points of clarification. Any members have points of clarification? Just mention a couple, address from the public comment session. Joe, I just wanted to address a couple of things on property taxes. We, I don't think you're paying operating millage, or you shouldn't be if you're homesteaded property of nine mills, so I think you need to lower your estimate of 17 mills by nine. The SROs are not an MPS assessed millage rate. Those were voted on by all county taxpayers and not assessed by MPS. Those are for all school districts. So you should be paying MPS supplemental, MPS bond 2015 are the only MPS assessed millage rates. If you see it differently, happy to have a conversation with you. Bill, I apologize for not following up with you. I'll make sure that we do that on the cost benefit analysis. I do want to make sure that you know we do work with outside professional firms that have engineers and architects involved to assess our facilities from a useful life standpoint. It's not, we don't have the expertise internally to do so. I was actually just talking to Penny the other day about how many work orders we have just in Carpenter alone. In a 100-year-old building, you can imagine that our maintenance crew is over there almost daily, if not multiple times a day. So I think they're buying parts for the boiler on eBay, so this is where we're at. But appreciate it. Appreciate the comments, and we'll make sure to address your questions. Well noted. We do have one important thing to do tonight. It is Mr. Hatfield's last board meeting, so wanted to say some nice things about you and...
You need a clean mic.
So, John, you've been with us through thick and thin, and I've got a couple notes here about your service that I wanted to read to the public and recognize your service. So, John, you were first elected in November of 2020, beginning your term in January of 2021 during what was one of the most challenging periods in recent history for school boards, starting out with the COVID-19 pandemic. And despite many uncertainties and obstacles the pandemic presented to the board, you navigated those uncharted waters with respect and courage, providing a steady voice and a collaboration, a collaborative approach to decision-making even during the most difficult times. As if that wasn't enough, you also served during the selection of a new superintendent, critical moment in the district's history, to which you brought integrity and professionalism. Over the course of your tenure, you served in various roles on the board. As secretary, your thoughtful perspective and leadership have been invaluable to the board's work. You chaired the Administrative Services Committee, which is a thankless job updating board policy, and the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee, as well as set on Finance, Facilities and Operations, and HR Committee over multiple terms. In addition to these roles, John represented the Board on the Advisory Board on Instruction in Sex Education, the District Improvement Committee, and the Distinguished Service Award Committee, showcasing your commitment to ensuring an equitable and inclusive culture across all areas of MPS. Your service on the board has consistently reflected the vision of MPS, and your leadership has played a key role in advancing initiatives that enable all students to achieve success. On behalf of the MPS Board, staff, and families, I want to say thank you for your dedicated service to the MPS community. Thank you very much.
We have a small gift for you.
Okay, thank you. No, thank you guys very much. It's been, it's been fun. We've been, been through a lot in the last four years. I know many of you have been on for longer. I think we navigated COVID extremely well. I know that we still have recovery work to do in some of our classrooms, but I think our district did a great job, and I'm proud that we were able to keep students in school for longer than most schools in Michigan and many schools in the nation in person. I'm also very pleased that we successfully completed the search for a new superintendent, Penny. I know that was, it was a very good time for us transitioning for, from Mike to Penny, and I think Penny's done a wonderful job since she's been in the role. And I think we should all collectively be very proud of the work that we've done to advance this bond. Over the last two years, we've spent numerous hours with Barton Mallow and various committees, basically trying to understand the best way forward for our learners. And I think we should all be extremely pleased with what we've come up with. And while the proposal won't be, won't be seen as perfect by everyone, I think it's very comprehensive and represents not only the work that this board has done based on our extensive facility study, but it also represents feedback that we heard from members of our community and members of our, from our students, administrators, teachers, et cetera. I think in closure, I just want to say this, my time on the board has been great. I've learned a lot from each and every one of you. I'm continually impressed by our teachers and the dedication that they put forward every day, our administration, and the limitless potential of our students. So thank you all very much. I wish you all the best of luck.
Thanks, Sean.
Well, you know, I got to get down on this, too. You know, I think we're selling short your, the importance of your perspective and your influence, especially in this facility planning process, hours and hours in FFO studying that assessment data, facility assessment data, and really grappling with all of those possibilities. And I, as a new superintendent jumping into that, thank you. It was, that committee was amazing, and you were a big part of that. I also just want to say how much I appreciate how you always are kind but nudging us to keep the focus on student learning and achievement and to really think about what that looks like across our district. And I, I hope you're leaving this experience knowing that you've made a really positive impact on students and our staff, certainly on me and our entire school community. So thank you for your service. All right, as we close out, I'll just offer, you know, this is the time of year where opportunity to reflect on where we've been over this first semester. The team continues to visit classrooms, and I'll just speak on our behalf that, you know, we do continue to be impressed with what we see. All of our staff, paraprofessionals, teachers, administrators, and our students continue to just blow us away with what's happening in those classrooms every single day. It's exam week, so we wish our students taking exams well and to know that it is important, but this one test score doesn't define you. And then, again, as we move into winter break, just an opportunity for everyone to reflect and rejuvenate and relax and do things that bring them joy. And whether you celebrate Christmas or Hanukkah or Kwanzaa or other religious or cultural celebrations, to know that we're thinking of our school community and that we wish them well and looking forward to the new year.
Well said. So want to, we're going to move into closed session in a minute here, but reflect what Penny just said about closing out the year strong as we wrap up the first semester and think of everybody, especially our families, as they celebrate Christmas and Hanukkah and many other holidays, but wish everybody the best holiday season, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Reading that it's the first time that the start of Hanukkah and Christmas line up since 2005.
Oh, terrific.
Yes. But I will, we are, we double-checked with our attorney, we can make one motion for both 10-1 and 10-2 so long as we read them both. So I will entertain a motion for 10-1 and 10-2. We will come back out of closed session, do a for-action for Penny's evaluation, and then adjourn.
...that we go into closed session to consult legal counsel regarding pending litigation as permitted under MCL 15.268, Section 8E. Further, that we go into closed session for the consideration of superintendent's personnel evaluation as permitted under MCL 15.268, Section 8A.
Support.
Yep, I got it.
I'll say a motion by Lotterbach, support by Hat, support by McFarland.
All right. President Raj?
Yes.
Vice President McFarland?
Yes.
Secretary Hatfield, yes. Treasurer Lotterbach?
Yes.
Member Blazy?
Yes.
Member Ringold?
Yes.
Member Horowitz?
Yes.
All right. We are moving into closed session. Thank you. We're now out of closed session, and item number 11 is for action, superintendent's evaluation. In closed session, we reviewed Penny's evaluation, which was done pursuant to Michigan law and the utilizing the rubric provided by MASB. MASB has updated their rubric consistent with the updated state law, which removed one evaluation standard from four to three, and would entertain a motion to approve the rating of effective for Penny, which is the highest rating. Do I have a motion to approve the rating of effective?
Support.
Motion by Lotterbach, support by McFarland. Any further discussion? Congratulations, Penny, on your effective rating, and look forward to your continued And I will take a vote, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous support.
I'll just offer quickly in the minute we have left, you know, Mike Shero was a great role model in this, having sat over in one of those seats for his evaluation, and it's real. It's the team that helps us achieve this, so big thanks to, to our leadership team. Thank you for the evaluation.
And I'll also note that we did do a mid-year check-in on your merit as well, and we'll do that again in, probably in June. I will take a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned.